Call the meeting to order. If I may make introductions, I'm Tom Prickett, Chairman of the Zoning Hearing Board. To my far left and in front is Pam Padani, the stenographer. To my far left is Bob Vaughn, who's alternate member of the board. Kara Sheridan, who's the secretary. Chris Volz, who's the attorney for the committee. And from the law firm Tucker Aronsberg. And then to the far right is Liz Ross, who's the zoning director. I'd like to start by making a motion to take Bob Vaughn from alternative Vaughn, from alternate member to an acting voting member of the committee.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Secondly, if we could have anyone who plans to give either variance request or extension request or to provide testimony, if you could please stand to be sworn in, please. Thank you. I don't believe we have any old business, if I'm not mistaken. We do have new business. We have three items this evening. We'll start with the first, which is application number 2022-00191 Elm Partners Limited Corporation, located at 212 Muse Bishop Road in Muse, Pennsylvania. The applicant is seeking an extension of time of our special exception approval, which we granted on October 18, 2021. We'd issued a decision granting the request to permit Barnes Brothers motorcycles and off-road to operate power sport sales and service business on a property located at the aforementioned address in Cecil. This is subject automatically to one approval that expires. No application for the occupancy permit to commence a use or building permit to undertake the work described in the decision granting the special exception has been submitted within 12 months of said decision. So I'm just providing that as a little additional background. I assume you'd like to make presentation specific to the request for extension?
Yes.
You can use the podium if you'd like.
I'm sorry, before we get started, I don't think we approve the minutes.
Sorry. Is there a motion for approval of August 15, 2022 minutes?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.
Oh, I'm staying, I wasn't here.
Okay. And Liz will assist you in setting up the podium.
Hi, I'm Brad Barnes. We're asking for a 12-month extension. We don't know that we're going to need it, but what we don't want to have happen is have to go through this entire process again. The reason for our delay is the Muse School Street reconstruction project. We need that street to complete our parking lot, to have an exit. And the school board has been, well, not the school board, the school district has been delaying that. Cana McMillan School District, as they were constructing the new elementary school, committed to straightening Muse School Street by 2020. Post office was not torn down until mid-August of 2021. We met with Greer Hayden, the architect for the school district, in September of 2021 because the previous owner had told them the building was in the process of being sold. We had some interaction with Mr. Hayden and Jordan Mayer, the Director of Facilities and Transportation for Cana McMillan, before we closed on the building in March of 2022. We had conversations with Mr. Hayden in April and June of this year, but we began to grow concerned that the construction on the new road in the intersection had not begun. We found out that Supervisor Frank Agizio was also very upset this road was being delayed. So we attended a school board meeting with Mr. Agizio and Supervisor Barney to discuss the delay. The district was going to wait until school was out in June of 2023 to begin construction, and we told the board that was unacceptable because we need that road completed to begin our construction. Superintendent Michael Daniels said they would work with us and get it done. The district said they're waiting for a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT that they applied for over a year ago. Based on what we have seen so far, we do not believe they will begin construction until spring, if not later. Our parking lot will be the last phase of construction, but we cannot pave most of it, come back and complete 30 by 150 feet later. To operate our business, vehicles need to exit onto Muse School Street. We can't operate without that section completed. Also on our end, we've had delays. Our architect started when we closed on the building in March. He's still waiting for his structural engineers to complete their work, hopefully soon. We've talked to several construction companies, but no one can give us estimates until the drawings are complete. That's why we're asking for an extension of 12 months, just in case we have even more delays. We really hope to be under construction by spring or at least early summer, but we cannot count on that based on how the school district has performed to date. The economy is still recovering from how governments reacted to COVID. There's still labor shortages, construction material shortages. We just don't want to start from scratch with the zoning hearing board if we miss a shorter deadline.
Any questions from members of the committee? Refresh my memory, I think there was some difficulty of area resonance to your proposed business in them not having off-street parking?
Well, no one's really complained about it. I think we have 34 or 37 spaces, we need all of them. But there are a handful of people that are going to need to find an alternate place to park.
Okay, and your lot is not available for them, correct?
It will not be, we're going to need those spaces.
Okay. Any comments from those in attendance? If not, I would entertain a motion?
I would make a motion that we grant the request for the 12-month extension to the special exception approval that was granted on October 18, 2021. That was application 2021-0012, and was set to expire on October 18, 2022. This special exception approval shall now expire on October 18, 2023, and no further extension will be granted.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Good luck with your future endeavors.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Second application is number 2022-0020, Ryan Holmes, front and yard setback variance. This is located at 431 Dogwood Lane, McDonald, Pennsylvania. The request seeks a 12-inch front yard setback variance and a nine-inch side yard setback because after completion of the construction, applicant realized the home was built over the applicable setback lines. The code establishes a 10-foot required rear and side yard setbacks. Just make two comments to kind of lead us into the review and discussion. The house is already built, but the mistake does not entitle them to relief. The mistakes are minor, and they do not appear to be intentional. The violations are small, and the applicant may be entitled to a de minimis variance. But with that, if you would kind of walk us through your presentation?
Yes, my name is Jeff Miller, for Ryan Holmes. And due to an error, my foundation contractor, the house was set to be far forward and to the left. So I'm just requesting a variance to the front and side yard setbacks.
Any questions?
I was just going to ask out of curiosity, did they, was it a third-party contractor that you were working with, and did they give any explanation as to the error?
They have a plotter device, and it was apparently miscalibrated. And so it threw off all their dimensions based on what the surveyor stakes were. So it's been corrected, and it hasn't happened since, but...
Okay. And I just want to confirm, you're looking for a 12-inch front and a nine-inch side setback, right? Because I think one of our notes said 11 inches, I just want to make sure.
Well, I'm just looking at this document right here. And if we look in the middle, it says it's nine feet, one inches to the boundary line in the back, where it's nine feet, three inches at the front.
It is slightly askew as well, the house. So it's, basically the house is turned very slightly by like an inch and a half, I think, in one direction.
So do you need an 11th, 11-inch variance in the back there?
It sounds like, when you said nine plus three inches, it sounds like 11 for the rear as opposed to nine.
Yes.
Okay.
Entertain a motion?
I'll...
Is there anybody else here?
Is there anyone present that would have any questions, comments? No? I'll entertain a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we grant the request for a 12-inch variance to the front yard setback requirement and an 11-inch variance to the side yard setback requirement for the home constructed by the applicant as depicted in the application and explained at the hearing.
Is there a second to that?
I would second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Carries unanimously. Good luck. Our third and final application is number 2022-0021. Dylan Small, continuation of non-conforming use, located at 1 Second Street, Lawrence, Pennsylvania. The applicant seeks a special exception for alleged pre-existing non-conforming use to operate his mechanic service and auto sales business at the property. And I think if you could walk us through, because we had a kind of a need for a lot more information regarding the prior use of the property, as well as more about the actual business.
I'm just a renter here, this isn't my building or anything. I'm already renting it from the landlord. He owned this building since 2008 or so, where he ran a sort of a body shop, paintless dent repair business for a while. Then there was another mechanic-type shop in there, too. I'm just trying to be all on the up and up and get all my licensing in order and stuff from the state, so I'm just trying to be all... As far as I know, it's only been, it's never been like a residential-type garage. As you can see from the picture there, it's a huge garage, not like you would park a car in there, you know, store all your stuff.
Attitude or responses, input from neighboring residents?
The immediate people, you know, I'm always friendly with them, trying to work on their cars and that sort of thing, it's just kind of the guy. So sometimes people don't like people moving and coming and going from the lot, it seems like, but other than that, it just seems like one resident in particular that was really...
Troublesome, too?
Yeah.
Is there anyone here tonight representing any of the residents? I guess not. No. Questions the board members may have?
I have a couple of questions. So on this parcel, the home, is that, is there any occupant at that home?
Yeah, my landlord rents the home separately from the garage.
But it's not a person who's involved with the operation of the thing, of the shop at all? Okay. And what would be, would you be the sole person?
Like a South Hill Subaru-type situation, I'm just looking for small-time mechanic garage. I live like five minutes down the road, you know.
Would you have other employees on the premises?
Maybe like one or two other part-time type people.
And I guess, prior to, one of the questions I have is around the sale of the vehicles because that would sort of require that they be displayed on, in the parking lot. I mean, is that what you're intending, that what you would intend to do is display them for sale there?
It is, yeah, just because that's what PennDOT requests. It's not like you can keep them parked inside or something. They say you have to show at least three cars with their doors open. So I'm not looking to pack it full of a million different cars there, though.
And your hours of operation are what, Monday through Sunday?
Just like Monday to Friday, nine to five.
Okay, no Saturday, no Sunday?
You definitely can't do Sunday, anyway.
And do we, can I ask a question? Do we have any former record of approval for non-conforming use on this property?
No, the township does not, that's what I was going to ask. Do you have anything to document that this was used commercially before?
You just look it up on Google, it'll pull up the old people that were in there even. Just type in the address, one second.
Do you know when they were there?
Less than a year ago.
Okay, and so you're saying that in 2008, he's operated this commercially? Oh, I'm so sorry, I don't mean to start questioning, you're in the middle of questions, I'll wait to...
No, I mean, that's really what I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand if there's any record of this being approved for non-conforming use, either, you know, or any kind of official documentation of a business being in residence there. I didn't see that in any of the notes, so that's where I was going.
Right, no, we have documentation that the building, the garage was built in like 96, I believe. Does that sound right to you? Okay, oh, there you go.
Well, that's taken 2013, but something like that.
But we don't have any record that any commercial occupancy permits were ever issued for it. We don't have any record of a commercial use approval being granted. County records don't indicate that any commercial taxes were ever assessed. We have no documentation that this was a legal, non-conforming...
And just out of curiosity, the property that's on Third Street, do those exist? Do you happen to know, commercial filings or anything for the one that's on Third Street?
So I did not look. I do, I think, in my opinion, that's a little more in characteristic for this neighborhood because there are mixed uses there. But the fact that he's not living on the property kind of really makes this a different circumstance when looking at that. But no, to answer your question, I did not look at the others in the neighborhood.
On Third Street, is that the Stush Automotive that you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, I was looking at, it really is on the very edge of...
If you follow School Street around, it's just like a quarter mile down the road. It's the same zoning, too, that I saw on the map.
But it does abut almost, it looked like anyways. It's like right across the street from an industrial zone or a commercial zone. If I was looking at the map.
Right. I think the difference there is a clear continuance, you know, that use did not cease. We, I'm not claiming that they were gone more than a year, you know, to lose that status if it were there. I just don't have any record to support that for this location.
Yeah, I think if we had some sort of official records or taxes that were paid, commercial taxes that were paid, or anything that we could use to support that other than, you know, just looking it up online, I think it would, at least I would feel more comfortable with, you know, the ability to defend that.
Maybe the property owner would have something?
What kind, what would you classify as an official document? So I know what to ask for.
I mean, tax, payment of commercial taxes? I don't know, Chris, do you have any advice on what would be considered a more official court document?
Or not even that, I mean, what I think the board needs to see is objective evidence of exactly what was going on at this building beforehand.
Okay.
And detailed, and, you know what I mean, like not respectfully, you know, not go Google it.
Just type that out, Word document, what I know, you know. I'm just some guy.
Do you have at least currently?
I do, yeah.
Is it conditioned on being able to operate a business out of it?
I don't think so, I just thought it was going to be, I didn't even know that the zoning was going to be like this, to be honest. Just, you know, looking at the property, I thought, you know, I've seen other places. I see the auto body shop on the corner, other mechanic shop across Georgetown, you know, Rice's and stuff like that. So I figured it's not that out of the question to think that a commercial property would be back there.
Yeah, I think in kind of the spirit of zoning, when we think about why we put zoning districts in place, it's not to go in and then switch everything around and tell everybody, oh, you can't have what you had there before. But part of the goal is to have like uses together over time as those parcels get sold or move on to other hands. It gives us the opportunity to better conform to use in that area. So that's just kind of what I'm looking at from, you know, the information provided. If there was another way, like we said, to show continued use or previous uses, that would be helpful to your case, if you...
Any other questions?
One thing for clarification, I think you already answered Tom on this, but I just... So you are not permitted for that area to have Sunday hours, and you do not, as a personal desire, look for Saturday hours?
I have a baby at home, I'm not trying to work more hours than I have to.
Because we have to set restrictions on it, and I just want to be very clear.
Car sales and stuff like that, you can't work on Sundays anyway. I don't want to work any weekend days, so...
Got it. So are we putting this on hold pending this additional documentation? Or will we move on it now?
Please.
I'm not looking for any off-street, like on-street parking. You can see the measurement, it's pretty small square footage-wise, but I'm not looking to go really beyond what...
I'm talking about having extra cars on the lot.
Yeah.
In addition to customers' cars.
I'm not looking for like, you could probably park eight cars inside and eight cars outside and still have day-to-day operations. I just need to have car sales attached to it, just so I can be all legit with...
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the home occupation guidance as well, there's no permit, there's no flexibility for permission of granting the sale of retail merchandise of any kind through that property. Home occupation also would require that you were living on the property as well. So I think we would, we definitely need more information on what was the previous usage. Even if it was just auto body and no sales at that point in time, we're still, in my opinion, stuck with, you know, having, we can't extend and go beyond the non-conforming use that already exists if the non-conforming use as it existed was simply an auto body repair shop, for example.
Not to put Mr. Cassiel on the spot, and not that your testimony would meet the criteria for specific objective evidence, do you think, did you say you might have thought it might have been at one time used as like a garage in the past? No?
No, I was talking about Sidowsky's.
Okay. Okay, but not here, this is at a different location?
I don't know anything like this.
Okay.
I'd entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, I move that we deny the application for recognition of a pre-existing non-conforming use.
And do we want to add information requested to the documentation of the pre-existing non-conforming use be provided, if at all possible?
If we're going to do that, we should table this until a later date, if he can come forward with additional information and evidence. Instead of, if we're going to deny it, we can deny it, or if he requests, we can agree to table it to a later date for him to provide more information. I don't know if that's futile, or if that's something you would be able to do.
I mean, I'm already leasing the space, you know, wasting money, so I would prefer to do whatever I can, you know.
I'll make a motion that we table the decision on this item pending further documentation information on previous use.
And I would second that. All those in favor? I think to fast-track, as soon as you might have information, if you could get back to Liz, and then we could expedite things, correct Liz?
Yes, sir.
Do I have to wait another month then still to come back here, or...
We'd have to act at a meeting, that's correct.
But the sooner, assuming there is documentation that you can acquire and provide Liz, the sooner we can get you on the agenda, the better.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just so you understand, like, you need to demonstrate, you need to make a no-brainer for us that what you want to do has been happening there since before the year 2000, and consistently since then.
Actually, can I ask one more question? So the five questions we normally ask to have answered weren't provided in the documentation. Can we also ask for just those sections to be filled out?
Well, he's not seeking a variance.
Okay, so we don't need that. Okay, gotcha, non-conform use, okay, thank you, never mind.
Thank you. Are there any other items for consideration or discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Seven, 721. Yeah, Thanksgiving, and then it rains Friday. For deer, yes. Do you go out? No, I don't either.
There's nothing worse than... Santa Claus was...
Yeah.
But there's nothing worse, do you think, Tom, than just sitting there in the cold, huh? Let alone a deer, huh? Well, I hope you have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
You as well.
Yeah, thank you.
My pleasure.
Hosting?
We are, our son, his family, a cardiologist friend of mine.
Okay.
And then we go on the edge of our property, onto the neighbor's property, and he sets up a clay bird thrower on the hilltop, and he has a table with coffee and donuts and a bonfire going, and we'll shoot clay targets.
Okay.
Then we'll come back to our property, and I have that elevated deck up on the ridge top with a cabin on it, and I'll have sliced up peppered sausage and cheese and bourbon and stuff. We'll sit there and drink, and, yeah, it's just a nice lead-in to Thanksgiving Day.
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah. In fact, my son's good friends with one of the Cecil Police, and he'll come over, too. And so after the shooting, after sitting on the deck and drinking that, he goes, "This is the way to start..."
This is...
Happy Thanksgiving.
Have a good Thanksgiving.
Yeah, so apparently I'm having babies at 42. Shit.
What's wrong?
Oh, I'm having a baby. That's what's wrong.
How far in are you, if I may ask?
Just what I wanted, another baby.
Do you have one child? Three, this'll be the fourth.
I guarantee this'll be number four. There's not a chance. No way, I just know it, no way. Have a happy Thanksgiving.